I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael, you gotta do a roll call.
Lee Miller.
I'm here.
Marie Early.
Here.
Dave Morandi.
Here.
Fran Murphy.
Here.
Steve Alotto.
Here.
Okay, welcome everyone. Open up the meeting, our monthly Board of Trustees meeting. First is, there he is, police report. I don't know how he just moves up every...
Wow, I just hope that I missed that, I missed the pledge and everything else. Good evening, everybody. For the month of April, we had, from my count here, we had a number of service calls, was sixty-seven. For the year-to-date, it's two-hundred-and-forty-two service calls. For the month of April also, we had one arrest on a vehicle traffic law. A gentleman had a couple suspensions, so he's placed under arrest. We had fifty-five moving summonses and sixty-six parking summonses, for a total of one-twenty-one for the month of April, and year-to-date is three-hundred-and-twenty-eight. Other than that, everything's going pretty well. Two quick things. I want to thank the board and the mayor for letting me hire two more new officers that will be starting June first. And also, I would like to request that the village board send a letter to the sheriff's office, to the corrections department, for the good job they did with painting upstairs. They had the prisoner work program came and they, he patched up all the holes that were upstairs, and he did a great job doing the painting on the two colored walls in the main office, my office, the hallway. It was a fabulous job, so I'd just like to acknowledge the sheriff for thanking him for having them come over and do that.
You could ease up on throwing the people around up there, it'll be less dense and...
Well, I think that's the first time another place has been painted in about thirty-five years. So, yeah, so I just want to thank them. It was no cost to the village except for the materials, so that kind of helps us out too.
Thanks for coordinating.
Yep, and that's about it.
Then the new police will be on, what's the schedule?
Basically, I'm gonna leave them off the June schedule. They have to do, for me, I want them to do at least four training sessions, and I will evaluate them, and they may need a little bit more. Officer Bolinger, our training officer, will take them out on patrol. I actually want them both with him, so it would, it would kind of put them together, instead of having to take four out one day or another. We'll have them both in the car with Officer Bolinger for four days.
They're not gonna fit in the car with...
We'll make it work somehow. And I'll go out with that. And then I usually have them go out with individual officers that have seniority that have been around for a while on different shifts, to experience a midnight shift, a four-to- twelve shift, and of course, a day shift, and get them accustomed into the commute system. Both officers know our system. One officer already works in Wallkill, and he does the track system, so he's kind of familiar with everything. He's already written some tickets, so it wouldn't be that hard. Just basically, the village, which, he's kind of a local man, so he knows the village. He's been here since he's a kid and stuff. And the other gentleman is from Wyoming Falls, so he's got to come in and really go over what the boundaries are and stuff like that.
When do you think they'll be on the rotation?
Again, the training's gonna be the month of June, and then I will have them on rotation in July. I spoke also, thanks for reminding me, I also spoke to Nico DeBala, and he's gonna be starting Memorial Day weekend.
That's great, nice.
He'll be available, okay?
All right, thank you.
Two questions? I have a quick question. So Saturday was an incident on our street, and we called the police station, got a message machine, left a message describing what was going on, no call back. Then we called, then there was another, I guess we hit three, to the infield officer on duty, same message machine, no call back. And I'm just wondering where the protocol should be then, what I should do in the future when something semi-serious is going on.
Well, you have to explain to me what the incident was.
There was a woman who hit two cars. I went up to ask her if she was okay. She said, well, she was gonna call her husband to have him come help her park. And then she didn't remember having hit the two cars.
Yeah, that would be a direct call to 911. 911 would dispatch us immediately. We usually do not have anybody that's upstairs in the station, because we have one officer on at a time. So if they're upstairs in the station, they're just taking a report real quick. We're out on patrol as much as, pretty much almost all day long. Again, the only time the officer will be upstairs is either for maybe a meal break or coming in to do a report. At that incident, it's a 911. If she hit, if she hit two of the vehicles, that is an emergency situation, and they would dispatch us immediately. The phones are basically for, you know, smaller complaints, not, that's basically, that's a 911 call. A small complaint would be, "My neighbor's dog has been barking all night," or, you know, something to that effect. Anything that's serious would be a direct call 911. And what happens is, if you do call 911 and say, you know, "Somebody's blocking my driveway," they will not go over the radio system on the 911 system. They will call the officer on the phone, and they will say, "Listen, we have a complaint at Eighty-three Main Street, they're blocking the driveway." And he will respond from there. The messages upstairs are more for informational, more for if you needed an accident report, if something happened a couple days ago, you'd call up there. The officer eventually, you know, when he goes up there, or when we're in the middle of changes or shifts, or if I'm there myself, I take, we have a note made now with all the messages, I will call you back, or the officer that's on duty will call you back and say, "If you're available, come in now, we'll get your copy of the report."
Okay.
Yeah, and if it's during business hours, you can come into the village clerk. The village clerk will call the officer to come in. The officer will come in if you need a copy of the report, complaint report, or anything to that matter, and we'll be able to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. I call, they don't answer me either. Rec. Commission, Vivanne.
We were busy this month. We don't have any new applications, but the mayor's park shed has a new door. We're very happy. It's a door that works, great. On the twenty-seventh, Steve Etta and John Murray and myself did walk through about three of the proctories that the recreation commission's kind of supervises. We compiled our list in this little pencil spreadsheet I did. That'll give us six hours. I have a Chromebook that doesn't work as efficiently without it anymore. We're gonna review them in our meeting next week. We're gonna set some priorities. Of course, I just wanted to bring in that electricity in all places is in the budget for this coming year, so we've got that as the first priority, but we don't have any estimates yet. So we'll be reviewing those. Top pop cleanup, it was, that poor guy, it was three weeks in a row, they couldn't do it. They finally had to do it on a Saturday instead of Sunday, so that happened last Saturday. Most of the old, if you remember that from the first time that top-up fence went up, they had all the old donors sign it up. All the old donor signs are back up, and about half of the new donor, you know, plaques are out, but they're not all finished. So they'll be finished within a couple of weeks, as soon as my son has a little extra time.
The electricity for the van stand, have you talked to anyone about that, or have you brought ideas?
I have. I did talk to Pedawa Electric about getting us an estimate. And then Bruce Campbell also, because it hadn't been done yet, but Bruce Campbell also spoke to him, so I think we just, I will have to like...
Okay, well, you could ask someone else to put something in the paper, but we should try and get it done.
Yeah, because I think, maybe I should talk to, I think I'll be in this week. Jeff, maybe you and I can talk about it, because we have to go out to bid on it anyway.
No, you don't, depends on how, that's what I was wondering, if you have an idea.
Yeah, no, so that's the issue.
If it's under three thousand, you don't have to.
Yeah, well, the business is in rough shape.
If it is, then you probably just need to read quotes.
We're still, the only part of the rental form that we haven't kind of tidied up is the Fipa Bayous Park for nonprofit rental for ticketed events. We made a recommendation at a previous meeting, but we haven't heard back as to what you would, we would do for non-profited ticketed events.
Jeff, can you put that on the meeting for the next, you done it for the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll address that, sorry about that.
Yeah, that's okay, I just wanted to put it on the note. And if, for some reason, if you're just kind of going through this, and you see anything that you think might, you know, just let me know. But this way, we have something to go from as we're planning our budgets, as we're planning what needs to be done, as we're working with groups and advocacy about things that have to get accomplished, so that's where we are. Thank you very much.
Planning Board. Let's see, Planning Board has the following matters. The Board at this time, Fifteen Main Street Public Hearing was held on five oh nine, five... Hey, nine. For the application of lower burdenment for change of use and site plan approval, the application is proposing to convert an existing commercial space to a cafe and a tourist home with one room to rent. The subject properties located Fifteen Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, and designated on tax map forty-eight dot twelve dash block one lot seventy. Properties located within the B-one general business zoning district as well as the national and local historic districts. The hearing was closed that night with support for the project from a neighbor in attendance and one by correspondent. Planning Board understands that the applicant has approached the village board to purchase the front stoop property. The Planning Board would like the village board of trustees to understand, should that purchase not proceed, the site plan reviewed and approved with minor conditions like screening interior garbage stores at the public hearing will provide all ingress and egress required via the new ADA ramp to be located on the site under the current carport. If the land purchase goes through, will require a minor site plan amendment filing for any structure. Zoning, Aaron.
We've got a continuation of the hearing for Twenty-One Parsonage. That's the small lot that, where a shed or barn is being converted into a home potentially. We increased a possible variance to two parking spots for that property to give us the option to keep a car out of that lot, should we grant the variances. We also have a public hearing for Five Railroad Street. That's for a shed in the backyard that would be going into the setbacks and also over the lot coverage maximum. In old business, we granted a five-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot apartment on Three Rocks Street as part of an existing building. The minimum was six-hundred square feet of livable area. And we granted a six-foot fence at Three Furnace Street where that property borders the business district that's in the R-one district. We've also got a workshop coming up for Fifteen Main Street at our next meeting, although we have not had an application from them yet. And that's it.
Thank you. Councils Town.
Brief report. This is not a new topic, so I'm happy. In the past week, the Phillips Town Board has passed several resolutions. We've been very busy, but we believe these resolutions will improve the quality of life in our town. On May eighth, we passed a resolution authorizing the energy efficiency proposal between Lime Energy Services and Phillips Town. This proposal allows Lime Energy and Central Hudson to install energy-efficient lighting throughout the Phillips Town Recreation Center, saving Phillips Town over seven-hundred dollars per month in energy savings while consuming less energy. Also, on May eighth, the Phillips Town Board passed a resolution authorizing the expanded use of the drug offenders' court to twice a month for Judge Linsin. We believe this will improve the drug court operations and access for families and individuals, as well as more efficiency for the drug court. We also passed a resolution on May eighth that will authorize the community choice aggregation opt-out letter for any Phillips Town resident who does not want to participate in the launch of the Hudson Valley Community Power in Phillips Town. All eligible residents and small commercial electricity customers will automatically be enrolled and do not have to take any action. Residents not wishing to participate must opt out by June thirteenth. And today, I'm delighted to report that this morning, with my colleagues on the Phillips Town Board, we approved a resolution authorizing Supervisor Shea to sign the Community Choice Aggregation Electricity Supply Agreement after a competitive procurement process. Direct energy was selected as the default community supplier for electricity in Phillips Town. This becomes effective July first, 2019, and the energy supply in Phillips Town will now be a hundred percent renewable sources from New York State Clean Energy Facilities. To learn more, visit HudsonValleyCommunityPower.com.
One thing, which we were looking at, the opt-out, I've read it differently. We're still having the same, we have the same contract, I would imagine, same supplier. And I've read that it's, you can opt out at any time, so, but there is a little discrepancy in there. It says something about thirty-three days, and here you're saying, or it's saying, you have to opt out by June thirteenth. I don't think that's true.
Yeah, when it was proposed, it was opt-out any time.
Well, it's in our contract.
Going forward, right.
What's that?
What was in your contract?
In our contract now, it's you can opt out at any time.
Yes, that was the, from the very beginning, that was the proposal that was, so there is no date on that.
Well, I will go back to the letter, the draft that we reviewed and...
Yeah, you should check on that, because if people have to do that, and by June thirteenth, I think that's...
It's like next week.
Well, that's...
Judy, that's what our letter says as well.
I know.
If you want to opt out prior to July first, you have to do so by June thirteenth. If you want to opt out July fifteenth, you can opt out at that date, but it will take a certain amount of time.
So it's like an early opt-out.
Yeah, so the full supplier doesn't go into effect July first, and the residents can opt out by July...
If they don't opt out by June thirteenth...
Right, by June thirteenth. Then you're gonna catch it July first.
We've been looking at that for a long time, and it's confusing to me, so I can't imagine what someone's gonna think.
So maybe we can clarify that language a little bit.
Yeah, I think it should.
June thirteenth, if you do not want this to become effective July first.
Right.
And any time thereafter.
I also, I didn't realize that the energy supply was going to be coming from New York State. I thought that the energy supplier was an out-of-state energy supplier.
Well, it's both. Some of it might come from Canada. Hydro power eventually. But all the renewable hydropower that comes from New York State is like fifteen to twenty-five percent in there. And the rest, I'm not sure. It's supposed to come from New York, but it can't come from anywhere.
Yeah.
But they're all supposed to be renewable...
No, they're not.
As defined.
No, no, no. If you look at the, sorry, if you look at what is being stated, there are two different choices that you can make. One is for renewable, which is point zero six three eight, and the other is HVCP, which is not renewable, and that is at point zero six zero eight. So you choose...
Right, you can take a cheaper option.
Right, and, which is not renewable energy. So, just in terms of your letter, we, I don't think we can say that it's a hundred percent renewable from New York State Clean Energy Facilities.
It isn't all from New York. There's different definitions of green and renewable. Like, the hydropower that's from New York only represents about fifteen percent of what we're getting from this company. And the rest is considered by definition to be renewable energy, but it's not necessarily from hydropower from New York State.
Well, we can say from New York State Clean Energy Suppliers.
Yeah. But we might be getting some hydropower from Canada eventually, so, whatever, I mean, it's, it's not...
It's not a big one.
No.
Thank you. Thanks.
Judy, thank you.
Do you have any more other questions?
Judy, on the Lime Energy that you're picking up, we've also looked at that. And your savings is about seven-hundred dollars a month. Do you know, is there a timeline as to how long are you going to be able to recoup the expenses it's gonna take you to set this up? Because I know how expensive this whole conversion is.
We do, we will recoup that within a little bit over a year.
Really?
It's gonna cost close to ten thousand dollars. The proposal is around ten thousand dollars. So in a little, over a year, we will have, recoup the savings. In five years, I believe the savings are around forty-two thousand dollars.
And one of the problems that we have with what Lime provided to us, Judy, is they base their energy savings on a sixteen-hour day, and it's either five or seven days a week. And for here, we don't use anything close to sixteen hours a day. So their projections in terms of savings that we looked at could not be, would not be, it's not realistic. So we had to really scale back on what they showed us as their savings.
Well, the recreation center uses a lot of energy, so it made sense to pick that aside.
One question. On the Fourth of July, you guys usually donate or send money our way. I was wondering if that was talked about, or if it's in the budget?
I think we did discuss it. I'll go back to you on that.
Okay, you let us know, we're just trying to...
Richard said he would send it to us.
Oh, and the other is, are we making headway on an assistant for the building, the code enforcer? Richard had said you were...
Yes.
...the lead on that.
We are looking for...
Take the Virginia hotspot, but...
No, we are looking for an independent contractor to assist with that, so we are, we're in the process.
So what do you mean by independent, someone that won't be working with Greg?
They won't be working with Greg, but as, it's not a budgeted position, it's, you know, it's a, it won't be a part-time. It will be the hours, based on the hours as a contractor.
And when do you think you'll have somebody?
An hourly basis.
When do you think you'll have somebody in place?
Well, we're looking, reviewing candidates now, so we hope soon. It's important.
What's soon mean? Is it May?
Well, we haven't...
Have you had any interviews yet?
We haven't had any interviews yet. So we hope over the next month to start the interviews.
Next month for interviews, did you say?
Well, as soon as we have identified candidates that can do it and come in for interviews, and over the course of the next few weeks, yes. At next month's meeting, I'll be happy to report on that.
Okay.
Or let you know before if we've hired someone beforehand.
Right.
That'd be great.
Keep us updated.
Sure, yes, certainly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, HDRB, current projects in April, we had a very full agenda. We reviewed applications for Sixteen Stone Street, One Ninety-One Main, Fourteen Stone Street, Tubofus Bridge, and fielded several requests for modifications at the Twenty-nine dash thirty-five Market Street property. We also held an expanded signage review for a new business at Ninety-two Main Street. For our May monthly meeting on May eighth, we reviewed a modification to the application for signage at Ninety-two Main Street, as well as new application for Three Furnace Street and Fifteen Market Street. We have not yet received any requests for workshops in May. Board work projects, we continue to work through the design standards. Last month, we met on a number of dates. We will meet again a number of dates. We have received the archaeological monitoring report from Twenty to the Boulevard mandated by the secret ruling. Board of Operations, code enforcement follow-up, we look forward to meeting with the board on May thirteenth, which I canceled, and will reschedule. Thank you for scheduling this session. Anything from the fire company?
Yes.
Yep, month of April, the Cold Spring Fire Company Number One has responded to twelve calls. Josh DiNardo, Cold Spring Fire.
I want to add something to the fire company, because Josh sent me an email this morning. We had asked about false alarms.
Yes.
He said they only get about four to six a year.
Thank you.
And it has to, and mainly it's smoke for kitchen-related or alarms erroneously going off.
Great, thank you.
Tree Advisory Board. April, the Tree Advisory Board held the village's annual Arbor Day celebration at the site of a newly planted, oh, came a cherry on Main Street. We thank trustee Fred Murphy for acting as master of ceremonies, and thank also to Robert Downey in the Highway Department, as well as Cub Pack One Thirty-Seven Weeblow's Den for helping plant and mulch the tree. Happy spring. Other miscellaneous items of interest, the DEC grant progress overview. In late April and early May, a few dozen tree pit guards were installed around our most embattled trees on Main Street as part of Cold Spring Priority Street Tree Maintenance Grant Project. We thank local business owner Rick Martini of RNG Rod Iron for doing a great job fabricating our new steel guards, as well as City Tree Guards for fabricating our HDPE guards. I would also like to thank the many private donors who have donated significant money for tree guards over the last two years, and whose goodwill and community-mindedness was one of the reasons we were able to apply for and win the money for additional guards. Mr. Downey, as well as Mayor Morandi, have been working on plans scheduled for paver installations on Main Street. Pruning work, RFP, is still to be determined, as well as tree tagging and other components of the grant project, which we'll update you on as needed. Tree Pit Gardening Workshop. On May tenth, the Tree Advisory Board partnered with the Cold Spring Area Chamber of Commerce to hold a free tree pit gardening workshop. The workshop was modestly attended, and those who were there asked great questions and admirably pledged to try their hand at helping beautify and care for our community tree pits. The workshop resulted in a handful of sign-ups for gardeners' tree pits on Main Street. We hope this will be the beginning of a trend that will spread. Anyone interested in adopting a Main Street tree pit is encouraged to contact the village clerk at zork.cstab@gmail.com for more information. I'd like to thank Jen and the whole, and the tree board for, you know, the tree pit workshop they held. I think it was kind of raining out that day, as it has been when it had the limits in it. Anyway, they put a lot of time into it, and they did a great job then, and the tree guards look really nice. And I think they really make a difference on Main Street, so thank them for all the work. Code Update.
On April third, the Code Update Committee conducted the fourth public meeting on the five topics of Phase Four. These are: evaluate permitting conservation easements, facades, and facade easements; evaluate outright demolition of, outright demolition of structures; evaluate adopting a waterfront consistency review law; and evaluate subdivision regulations. Valuable feedback was received from the public. The meeting was held open until May third to receive additional written comments. No additional comments have been received. The Code Update Committee met at the end of the month of April to review the results of the public meeting and to establish a plan to achieve Phase Five. Phase Five includes amend the village code for consistency and clarity, and revise the zoning map to include new zoning districts, and revise boundaries for existing zoning districts based on the recommendations of the village's existing comprehensive plan and local waterfront revitalization program. The monthly conference call with Nicer did not occur.
Thank you. Greg, Water and Waste Water.
All right, let's start with Waste Water. Real simple, we, just one thing to report. We did receive, actually today, the new tolerable generator. It was through the project funding that got us the Market Street replacement. It's a full four KW towable generator that will power that, as well as Campbell Avenue in the event of a extended power outage, we'd be able to plug into one and then go to the other jockey back and forth to keep the stations functioning. So that's pretty significant that we finally got that. It's been a few months into work.
Congratulations.
Yeah, should be good. We'll be starting it up, getting it wrapped down here and doing startup. Once we get everything arranged, it'll be a month or so before it's actually online. That's good news. Water Department. The annual drinking water quality report summarizing operations and test results for the year 2018 is at the printer now, and will be mailed out by month's end. The report will also be available online with the website. We'll be performing a hydroflush of the distribution system beginning this Sunday, the nineteenth, at nine PM, which will conclude by Friday morning, the twenty-fourth. And regarding the DEP Tascow connections, we received some response, as well as a request for clarification... as well as a request for clarification on a couple of items with regard to the new location's design. As DEP is now working in our area for the next several months, actually through early winter, we should remain closer to the top of the pile and be able to make a little bit of progress with them. Uh, regarding the water supply agreement, DEP remains steadfast in a position that would involve significant action and expense on our part to comply with the things that they're looking for. We'll have to meet with council to decide whether we're willing to sign on to what's basically in front of us now or continue the fight to try to get things to be more, make more sense. They're asking for some things that really aren't in our best interest, we don't believe so. Gonna need to meet with, with John and see whether it's worth a fight or not. That's where that's at.
Did you get any, um, results from the people who are looking in the sewer lines all the way?
Clean your inspection, uh, we didn't get the report yet. Should be coming in next week or so. They sent the invoice first.
A couple things, uh, one of the, uh, I know one of the DEC, I was looking through, I was just glancing through the back and forth, and it was regarding driving down onto the site where we're, where they want the connection now?
Yes.
And they were talking about, you know, the load and going over it. Do we, does that, do we even have to go down there or drive over that?
The, the main weight issue for that is gonna be construction of the pit for the equipment to get down there and do what, what we have to do on the property. That'll be the main part of it. And actually, the vault which weighs the most is gonna be set from a crane up unfished over it. So a lot of that stuff is gonna, gonna go away.
Okay.
The most part of access is only gonna be with a pickup truck over time.
Yeah, that's what I thought it seemed like they were-
Bart responded with all of that, and so now we, we have to hear back from them. That was, those were their initial comments, and now we have, now that we've gotten back to them, we'll see where, where it goes from there.
Okay. Uh, the last thing is, like, to all the viewers out there and everyone, every year, we have people complaining about discoloration in the water, and this isn't from a well or from whatever surface water. This isn't from pipes that we have in the system that are centuries old, whatever. So if people have complaints, please just, you know, they can call Greg or they'll call me or whoever, you know, call the village, don't, you know, start slapping things around on Facebook. I, I, it would really appreciate people just contacting us. We can explain everything. Greg's been here for twenty-five years and had to deal with this probably twice a year when people's water's discolored and we've had as much rain as we have. And there's really nothing much you can do about that.
You know, and I'd like to think that we do respond when we get the calls. Say, I usually respond to everyone who calls in to have a discussion with them. We'll, we'll sample if they're really concerned, if they have kids and they're worried about things. Yeah, we've gone out and done sampling at sites when people are really concerned. I was, it is a little bit aggravating when it happens online and you hear about it after the fact as opposed to somebody coming, it, it's almost as if, whatever. Handle it whatever way you want, but we prefer when we get the call so we know who's talking about what they're, what they need to do. And, you know, we're happy to come out and take care of things, it's kind of what we do.
And if they want an explanation, I think they should go to the source, which it seems like no one does. Or, you know, if you call, we'll, we'll take action. Anyway.
Does, does coloration settle if you leave it in like a jug or something? I've never experimented.
It can, it depends on what's going on. If, you know, if it's, if it's insoluble and it settles out, it precipitates out. If it's soluble, it's just kind of in this part of the water and it doesn't know we settle out. Usually with the chlorination, it oxidizes it and it settles out over time.
So maybe let it sit for a while?
Well, you know, a lot of it happens when somebody runs a bath for their kid and they see pollen in the water. Can I, you know, can we bathe in this? Kind of, that's, that's one of the questions, I mean, it's-
Is it mostly oxidized iron that's in the water? Is that what it is?
It's-
Basically rust?
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's got a lot to do with it. It's one of the main components of color is iron and magnesium, the two.
Right.
But the flushing that you're gonna do is gonna help a lot of it?
It's gonna take care of a lot of the major stuff. There's gonna be residual color because there always is. It's just a matter of-
What we get. Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate you. I think most people do. It's really irritating when they're just like banging stuff around and don't really just go to the source and say, why this? And, you know, I said the bed do wells a long time ago, which nothing can do to anything or whatever. So if somebody out there has a miracle way of cleaning pipes that are a hundred years old, let us know, you know?
Well, I think the dude guy you're bringing in has a magic wand. Or the JavaScript from that?
That's what he said.
He said he had, he kept it cheap when I saw him, so I don't know for sure. We'll find out. Thank you, thanks Greg. Building Department, uh, monthly report, uh, let's see, fees. Fees collected, let me see, where are we at this one? Oh, in April, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, fifty cents. Three hundred for searches and other fees, a hundred and sixty for twenty-five thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. This large number is represented because of, uh, of the Butterfield Farm, uh, Butterfield, yeah, pharmacy, Butterfield project and, uh, their, the new buildings that they're starting to work on. So it's fees for that, so that's why the number is so large. Highway Department, bugsy.
All right. For the month of April, we had fifty-eight point eight-six tons of garbage. Recycling was twenty-three point oh-two tons. For the month, we, uh, put out all the benches, we pruned all the trim leaves, uh, trimmed tree limbs down at Doc's side property. Continued filling pod halls, fabricated and mounted flag mounts for the bandstand, ground sidewalks and started cutting grass. We pulled three sidewalks, one at Church Street, one at Pine, and one at Orchard, that all had large stumps under them. Monthly brush pickup was on the seventeenth and eighteenth of April for the mass amount that was out. We met with Jen from the tree committee and about the tree guard placements, the tree pits that needed to be expanded. We prepped everything, cut multiple pits for the tree guards and removed a dead sapling in front of Hudson Hills. We repaired and replaced five broken sections of water lines in the utility room at Mayor's Park Pavilion, which was not all of them, you finished up on that, thank you by the way. Let's see, we also installed batteries in the case backhoe, serviced all the mowers and blowers for us and rec department. We started applying a new bed liner into the two thousand and nineteen F two fifty. And for May, we are looking to finish cleaning the streets, paint all the crosswalks and no parking lines, and ready everything for the coming tourist season.
Thank you, nice job on the sidewalks.
Thank you.
Justice Court, uh, fines forfeit veils and civil penalties, three thousand eight hundred. Parking tickets, two thousand one hundred and eighty. Uh, let's see, civil fees, two fifty. Mandatory state surcharges, two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight, a total of eight thousand five hundred and fifty-eight. Anything from the board?
Yes, I would just read the code update committee monthly report. The Phase Five is clarity and consistency. What the code update committee is doing is reviewing the entire village code to make sure that it is clear and that terms are consistent from chapter to chapter, and then incorporate into each chapter the changes that have been recommended for Phases One through Four. A number of the chapters in, that the code update committee has looked at, I believe, require a review by the village board. There are some chapters that may no longer be appropriate. So, for example, we have a chapter on shopping carts. I'm not sure that shopping carts really currently merit a full chapter on their own. We have a chapter on, um-
Rose Kaba might disagree with you.
Maybe. We have a chapter on brush and weeds. There are chapters that may not, no longer be appropriate for the village. So what I'm proposing is to provide the board with a, a, uh, a history of how the code update committee came into being, what its mission is, and what, uh, and what the objectives are, what the goal is. As part of that, I'd like to recommend that each of the members of the village board take on a number of chapters, or a single chapter, to review that chapter, to determine whether or not it's a chapter that we still want to keep, and/or whether or not the changes that are being recommended to that chapter are appropriate. And my plan is to present a proposal to the board at the next meeting, which would be on the twenty-eighth, for how we can accomplish that. I, of course, would be, I have to disqualify myself from reading through any of the chapters, 'cause I've already done it. Years and years. Okay, great, it just, when you send it to us, Marie, would you give us like a timeline, that you need it back so that we're not- 'Cause I know me. It will sit until you tell me, I have to have it. What I'd like to do is have all comments back by the end of June. So that's a month. And in terms of how many pages are you gonna be looking at? There are probably about five hundred pages in the code. I'll identify those chapters that I don't think you really need to spend any time on, and then identify those chapters that you, I really would appreciate your help. All chapters that you receive will be in redline format, so you can see what the old wording was and what the proposed new wording is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, moving along, um, gladly doing the next one, there was no, uh, nice and easy this one. Anyway, authorized mayor to sign the fire protection agreement with Nelsonville. Somebody has to, uh-
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a fire protection services agreement with Nelsonville.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is that a roll call or not?
Do we need a resolution for this?
Jeff, do we need a resolution?
There is a resolution.
We've never done one in the past.
Okay.
Is it, there's a blank space?
Is there a, a whereas at the end of this?
No.
It's a witness it, whereas. It's a witness it, whereas, and it's- I'm not sure that it's a resolution.
Okay, so we just have to fill in that date and, uh, and that's it?
Yep.
It's before the first of June, go first.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Nice.
Thank you, Nelsonville.
Yes.
You wanna sign?
Yeah.
I have the original, but you can sign it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Phil. Uh, next is a letter from Lydia Langley. "I'm shamefully remiss in requesting permission to set up a table for the League of Women Voters. We'd like to set up on June fifteenth and also on September seventh for a few hours in the morning, early afternoon, down by the visitor's center at the bottom of Main Street. Need to increase voter registration and also do a little membership drive. Thank you for consideration."
And we, and we denied other people from setting up tables on Main Street.
Well, they're not selling anything.
No, they're doing a membership drive.
And it's down, I think it would be in that area next to you.
They're promoting democracy, I think we should let them do it.
I agree. I'll make a motion to, uh, to grant the, uh, the use for it to have their, uh, the two days requested for a table.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, do you wanna send them something, or can you just tell them they need to be off the street?
On the road?
Yeah, behind, behind the wall, between there and the track.
Yeah, the tracks on the wall.
Let's see, next is the, uh, letter from the CCA. The letter that they're sending out to all the residents in Gold Spring. Marie reviewed it, made a future, I think, and Fran printed it out on our letterhead. I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the letter.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're mailing it though.
They're mailing it.
Okay. Because they have to put, they have to put cards and envelopes in there for everybody else.
I just, I thought maybe I was wrong about that.
No, they're mailing it and they have an envelope, and they're supposed to keep us apprised of everything that's going on. And then there's the contract itself. Anything else from the board? Do we go to a public comment? Public comment?
I just have a question.
Sure.
It's not a water complaint, but it's a water question, um, about the tunnel under the tracks, the railway tracks. There's the drains and there's a deep puddle.
A pool.
A pool, which this weekend with all the tourists, there's a lot of people trying to jump over it and someone could get hurt. I mean, is there anything we can be done about that?
We have some small boats that were bringing-
I will be opening that up this weekend. One drain only has an opening about three-quarters of an inch around, so any sediment that goes down in there actually blocks it right up. But we will be going down there with the hilti this week and opening that up.
Thank you.
Other question on, while we're on the subway, there's one area where now you can see rebar. What's going on there, have you noticed that? Or is that somebody just chipping away?
The only thing I, you know, the walls just, you constantly have water coming in down through there, so it's weakening the concrete. As far as from an engineer perspective, um,
We need an engineer. I'll like, I got something to look at, I don't, I didn't know if it, it seems like it's getting worse and worse there.
It's, it's been getting worse over time. It's, I've even tried, uh, the Henry's quit drying cement to get it to, you know, stay in there and it won't even stay in.
All right, I'll, uh, talk to our engineer. Okay. Yes?
We came by tonight because we are, we live on Market Street, on, by Market Street, and we sustained, uh, twice this summer, as you all know, water in our basement, which caused us significant loss of possession to, and some property, some parts of our property. And so you denied us any kind of compensation, saying the village was, wasn't the village's problem or it has nothing to do with the negligence of part of the village that we have that water in our basement. So we came tonight to ask you, uh, who would be responsible? It wasn't an act of God, certainly, it wasn't a storm. In fact, right now, we have no water in our basement after all this rain. It certainly had nothing to do with our behavior. The village came through themselves to pump out our basement. So if that's not right there, sort of admission, too sorry, you know? So we're here to find out, I mean, I've never met you all, and kind of like, why did you come to the decision that the village had no responsibility in that occurrence?
Well, we got your, we got your, your communication, and we sent it to, we sent it to our insurance company who handles it and represents us, and gave them all the information, the information that you had sent us and the information that we had, and, and they said that they wouldn't cover it. So it wasn't us denying it, our insurance won't cover that.
It happened the opposite, actually.
Excuse me?
The insurance is brought in first, the insurance denied it, and then we were advised to approach all of you, let you know that the insurance had denied it. And then my understanding is it was someone who subcontracted by the village who failed to maintain a certain valve or generator, you probably, you know about this much better than I do, the pump, and therefore the emergency pump that must have kicked in under that circumstance didn't. We were told this in no uncertain terms of the time. The, the, your insurance guy, by the way, sent me a very formal letter saying he'd be investigating. The very next day, he sent me a very formal letter saying he's completed his investigation, never did even qualify. So I don't consider that an investigation, really. But after, it was after that that I spoke with you, and was, it was suggested that I send all of your trustees the letter explaining what happened. So it happened the opposite, it was the insurance first denied us, then am I going to you? Because I thought that you would then possibly go to the insurance that your subcontractors use.
Jeff, is that how the sequence went? I don't remember.
I don't really, but it was, the insurance did deny and they then did send a letter asking for...
But they sent, communicated before that, saying what happened.
Yes, then we turned it over to the insurance company.
Turned it over to the insurance company.
Well, a very short letter to the insurance company initially.
What's that?
Just, just a very short letter saying, "What do we do now?"
I don't remember the letter exactly.
Yeah, but it's all, it's all...
I'm not saying that you sent a short letter, I'm just saying I don't remember.
But I do know. I do know that, you know, the time, who was called in.
But the, well, the letter you included that there was damage unto your property caused by the reasons, for whatever reasons, right? Is that what was in the, the letter? I don't remember the initial letter.
The first one.
I remember there was stuff in the first letter, and then the second letter had more stuff that you said was damaged.
Right.
So, you increased it from the first.
Well, the first one was an inquiry. The first letter I was told just to reach out to the insurance company, to find out what they would need at that point, and then later I was denied. That's when I came back to you all and said, "Okay, so they denied me. Here's exactly what our losses were."
Okay. I mean, I'll have to, I'll have to look at the sequence of things happened. I don't think you just sent this. I think we sent all the information to the, to the insurance company, which we wouldn't have had if you're saying the first, the first letter you sent. You're saying you sent us a letter inquiring, and then, then the second...
No, that, no, I was, I was advised, right, to send it directly to the insurance company. I copied you because I had a phone call with you.
Okay. And so, they had all the information about what had happened?
Well, they had very little information. They had information saying, "I'm writing you because this is what happened. What do I need? Where do I go now?" So, I thought they would say, "You have to supply us, you know, this, this, this," or whatever. He says he's gonna start his, his official investigation, wrote me a letter about that, and before I knew it, the next letter came saying he's concluded his official investigation.
Jeff is probably who you talked to on the phone.
Also, Jeff was very helpful.
We submitted to the insurance company. They denied the claim saying that the village wasn't liable for the damage, and then you had submitted the letter asking for reimbursement for the itemized, listed the items that were damaged in the flood.
Right.
And that was after we were, that was, that was after you found out that it was denied?
By the village insurance because it was my thinking at that point that you might wanted them go after, because I would think that you would all agree that someone was culpable here, other than us. So, our, the fact that we're out of all this money for replacement equipment shouldn't be our problem. Would you agree to that? Would you agree to that? We took out eight inches, we took out eight inches of water.
What's that? I mean, we have an insurance company that, you know, I'm not a litigator or whatever, and I'm not in an insurance company, so, I mean, we have an insurance company that we pay to, to, to look into all claims, so...
Right, so if that...
I'm not gonna override something that they, you know, that they...
If that insurance company says the village was not culpable, but if our understanding through village personnel who came to our house and told us as was happening, as they were pumping the water out of our house, that in fact the subcontracted, whoever the subcontracted group was, that they were, that they mishandled, that they hadn't been maintaining that, and that was the problem, then certainly I would hope that you would go to them and say, "You know, your insurance company at this point has to come in and, and compensate us." But apparently you chose instead just to say, "No one's, no, it was no one's fault."
I spoke to the gentleman in our basement when they were pumping it out. I wasn't home. Our neighbor said, "The village is here. They want to pump out your basement." And I said, "We need to pump out our basement." And he said, "Well, there's water in the basement. The village wants to pump it out." So, I said, "Well, let me speak to the gentleman." I spoke to the gentleman in our basement and he said, I said, "What happened? Water main broke?" And he said, "No, no, no. It's not your fee, your water fee. It's not a water main." He goes, "There's a valve and a pump that's failed because they didn't maintain it properly." Quote unquote. "They didn't maintain it properly."
That's negligence.
That's negligence. So, I was like, "Well, this shouldn't be a problem then because obviously that subcontractor failed to maintain it." And this happened twice. We had a leak, they had about three inches of water in the basement three weeks before.
Three weeks before. They knew.
And they knew there was a problem and it wasn't maintained.
How did they know the problem?
Because again, they went, they got called in by neighbors who had, and they helped them drag up possessions out of their basements, helped them pump it out.
And that was three inches of water that eventually drained off.
And we had no idea that our son had stored very expensive camera equipment there for a film shoot, and so that's the majority of what got, and, you know, he was a young guy starting out with student loans on top of everything else, and now all of a sudden he hears his livelihood, you know?
And your insurance company denied also to cover you? Or do you have insurance down there since you're in the flood, flood plain? Do you have insurance?
We don't have, well, the flood plane wouldn't enter here because again, it wasn't, it had nothing to do with the flood.
No, I'm just wondering if you went to your, since they have this expensive equipment in a basement in a flood plain, if you went...
No, because, no, we...
Did you go to your insurance company at all?
No, no.
Why wouldn't you do that? It's scary.
Because I guess I really see it. You know, that, that would then, you know, eventually could mean that we would then have to pay more for our insurance.
Our insurance company's responsible.
I mean, this again, you know, I'm just like a stupid faces, you know? Do you agree that this was, that this was negligent behavior on someone's part, other than ours certainly?
When we sent the information, was any of this included, this, which you're saying now as far as...
I have to go back and look and look.
I have it right here on my phone. Are you going to send it to...
No, we have it all in files.
Gold Spring?
First of all, just, just to clarify, the fact that our guys came down your basement or down anybody's basement to pump out does not mean that we're responsible. It means that they go pump out, they help people when there's floods down there.
Sandy came through, no one came to pump it.
Well, Sandy came through. I don't know if anybody could have handled it.
I'm just saying, I mean, five feet then.
People were in boats down there when Sandy came through, so that is not like...
I know.
And was your, was your basement flooded then?
Yeah, I mean, five feet. So, again, I would be nice to people who are living west of the train track. I'd try to help them stay there, and if this, this thing happened, I would try to then correct that with these people. And my fact, it's, it's not really, the insurance, I mean, really, I would think that's a sneeze. I mean, it's big money for us. It's not big money for the insurance company.
Unfortunately, because you came here through public comment, we don't have paperwork in front of us.
Okay.
So, we'd have to go back and pull paperwork and I look at, you know, because at this point, I'm sort of...
And we're running out of towns. Right now, we're here, so...
So, I guess we could re...
I mean, we'll re-review it, see what's something the insurance company...
Honestly, I mean, I agree with Dave in terms of I don't understand why you didn't